Meeting and ask to start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. I am going to next ask for approval of this morning's agenda.
Make motion to approve the agenda.
No, I will say.
I have a motion and second any discussion. Hearing none on paper say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, I can ask for approval of the minutes dated August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two.
That will move to first.
Second.
I have a motion and second any discussion. Hearing none on paper say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, I can ask for consideration of claims repayment dated August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
Oh, second.
I have a motion and second any discussion. Hearing none on paper say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is consideration for placing a restrictive covenant on the round barn percentage I have code six-one-four-point-two-four. Attorney Meyer.
Yeah, I asked for this just to be put on the agenda because I know this brown barn is something that you're not taking lightly. And what the future of the barn is, and so I thought ahead of the auction for the benefit of those that may be here to bid on that. If the board wanted to place some restrictions on the use of the property, this would be the time to do it. It's already subject to be on the National Historical Registry and there, you know, other requirements and things that restrictions that might apply already, but this would be the board's opportunity would be fair to the bidders to know that they would be taking the subject to any sort of restriction. So I put this on there just so that you'd have this opportunity and that the bidders would have the knowledge of what they're actually going to get. You know, the bidding on.
But the hardest, the hardest thing is is something that nobody wants to see tore down. But in reality, what that's the only option. So any covenant we put on there and that's the only option that could happen. It's tough for us to put that covenant on as well, or could there be some kind of escape clause? I, I don't know, but like I say, nobody wants to see it tore down. They want to see it turned into something. It is a piece of history that we don't want to lose. But we, the county, don't need to own it. I'd rather be out in the public domain and creating something like this.
Well, and I think there probably historically there was an effort to preserve it. The property was given to the Historical Preservation Commission and I don't know what they, what they did, but it, it's I mean, it still exists. So they might, you know, they at least preserved it, but whether they were able to improve it or, or restore it. I don't know, but so those efforts have been made. And so I understand. You know, you want to try to continue with that, but if it's beyond salvage, we shouldn't tie somebody's hands. I understand that. I'm not making a decision.
Right, yeah.
Acknowledging what you're saying.
I think Lance put it really well or described the situation because I would really like to see it preserved if by some means. But I also agree. If it's past the point of no return. I guess I you know, you can't require something that's not possible to.
I think some of the facts that need to be thrown out there in disclosure and it's really up to anybody buying to do the due diligence, but there's no water to the property. There's no sewer to the property.
Looks like Centennial District as well.
Yes, in the drainage district. And yeah, and after looking at it is in drainage district and there's an active report on it. So there's likely going to be work done. So that'll be assessments on that. So, but the interesting thing is there is phones, a phone line to it. And it's on point six four acre lands.
Point six is what I remember, but.
And looking at the, the sanitary code, I'm not even sure there's room for a leach field.
Yeah, that, that would be.
System, so.
We have up the fire to figure out, but I agree with that.
So those are all just things that need to be.
They could be options.
Yeah, so. So really, at this point, the agenda item is considering placing any restrictive covenants. Lance, you have anything that you'd like to add to a motion?
I don't, I, I mean, if anything, you can put a three-year, I wouldn't go beyond three years on the covenant of destruction of the building, but I don't even know if I want to do that. I don't want to, I don't want to hand tie anybody that purchases it, but I honestly do not want to see it tore down. I hope whoever buys it wants it for the structure.
Right. Uh, right now we mow it. Since I've been elected, we pay for mowing. Do you want a covenants that says it has to be mowed or? How, I mean, it's an unincorporated Harden County, so it wouldn't yet while it kind of sandwiched in there in Iowa Falls. Um, it would not be part of the Iowa Falls mowing grass, you know, upkeep their ordinance and so.
How do I put a covenant on that when we go on the rest of the county?
Right, I'm that, that's why it's, I just want to bring out the discussion.
I mean, I, I would hope you'd be a good neighbor and keep it all cleaned up and everything.
Right.
But since I've been on the board, we mowed it, we've insured it.
What's the insurance? You know what the insurance is?
I've got it.
It is.
Dollar amount, yeah. I think it's insured, don't quote me, but I think it was like twenty-four thousand or something value.
Valuation.
I think that's what we insured on it.
Okay.
It's been a while since I looked at it though.
Renee, do you want to formally put any covenants or restrictions on?
You know, I went and looked at it yesterday and it is it's an interesting piece of history. I mean, when you go in and you see all the stanchions that are, that are in there and just the way it was. You know, a round barn.
Right.
Whatever. It's very interesting, but I, I agree with Lance. I don't think we can not knowing what it's going to take to burnish.
The one thing when you mentioned the stanchions, because I went in and looked is milking used to be done in horizontal fashion. And then it was found, you know, several years later that putting them in a circle was better for some reason for the operation logistics. And so it's interesting that they were milked in a, in a circle.
Right.
So.
Something I've never seen before.
But very unique structure, that's for sure. So. All right, if there's anything else you want to add, Darrell? No. Okay. So if there is no if we don't want to consider placing any restrictive covenants on it, I can go ahead and move to nine, it's nine oh eight. And we can go ahead and open the public hearing, which is the auction of the round barn. And I'll turn it over to Attorney Meyer as the auctioneer this morning. All right. Can I have those that are here to participate? Identify yourself so that Jolene can get everybody's name down. So anybody here, I've got some gentleman in the back. You are. Soon Julie heard, heard that. Okay. Ma'am.
Darrell Albert.
Anybody? Anybody else that's in the room?
Is, was this restricted to attendance only, or could they be, you know, same as well, I don't recall.
I don't know that we did. I don't know that we did restrict it. We didn't require any prior, you know, qualifying bid or anything like that. So I guess if there's anybody online, could you identify yourself if you're interested in bidding?
Do they have the ability?
Yeah. Well, as we get started, if something does come online and they do want, I mean, you can jump in, you can, you know, get passed over, you know, you can, you can jump back in if you fell out of the bidding, that's fine. And then the board, well, I mean, I could, we'll have to decide before, you know, the gavel falls on sale that, you know, it's with reserve, they can say no. So just be aware of that, that before sales final, the, the board gets to accept it or not. So they'll have to take action on that. Mike, can you put up that first page of the, yeah, right there. Back one. Yeah. We talked, you know, you heard this morning that there's no sewer, no water. It's in a drainage district, but also on the website we had posted, you know, as is, we make no warranty about property is being sold as a quick claim deed. It's on the National Historical Registry. We advise you to, to view it on your own so you can see if there's any sort of you know, easements or somebody might have a claim of of any kind for use of the property. Noted here that somebody is receiving electricity from the electricity that serves that property. So that's a snag. And it's currently the county has needed it to the Historical Preservation Commission, but that organization is defunct. And so hence it's coming as a quick claim deed. There's I'm not going to make any warranty about it, but it was the counties who put it in their name so they could get grants and things that kind of fizzled six years ago or so. So, but the deed was never put back into county's name. So we're given the quick claim deed to be aware of that. So with those caveats, would somebody like to start the bidding? Hundred dollars. Hundred dollars, Mr. Albright. I guess I've got a hundred dollar bid.
I have two, Darrell.
What's that?
Two.
Two hundred. Yeah, two hundred, anybody? Two hundred, three hundred, three hundred, Mr. Albright. Four hundred, Mr. Sewer. Six. Six. Seven. Seven, Mr. Sewer. On, on beacon, the, the set's value is it's over two thousand, twenty-three ninety is the gross assessed value on it. Are we at seven right now? Is that where we're at? Anybody want in?
I'm going to pass for now.
Thousand, thousand, okay.
Eleven.
Got eleven. Twelve. Twelve.
Thirteen.
There are thirteen. Fourteen. Now fourteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Sixteen. We got sixteen.
Seven.
Now we got seventeen.
Eighteen.
All right, at eighteen. Nineteen. Mr. Sewer, that was nineteen. Two thousand, two thousand, Mr. Albright. One. I asked how bad you wanted.
Well, I'll bet you. I live right next door.
Sure.
I already almost wrapped all the way around. So. Live there since two thousand five.
Now the high bid is twenty-one hundred, Mr. Sewer.
Take a recess on it.
I'm fine with that.
Just take five minutes, I'll make a phone call.
That's fine. We can go on with other business and then we can come back. Works for me. Is that right with you, Mr. Albright?
It'd be, it'd be in your favor.
I mean, it's, he's got the high bid anyway. So I mean, he's in a position to, to put the brakes on.
Let's bring it back after we're done with the change of statuses.
Yep, all right. All right, next item I have, I've got consideration of abatements of property from the assessor's office. Lance, do you want to give the, you talked to Connie Mesh.
I, I talked to Jolene on it.
And Jolene.
So Jolene, Michelle, either one of you want to get some idea of what's going on with these? For my take it, was the computer system just kind of took them off? We had.
Yeah, there's just a, a glitch in what happened to the procedures and they were supposed to be on these credits and somehow were left off. So we need to do the adjustments to do the public service to give them their credits that they aren't deserving and make the adjustments.
So we originally put them on and then as it made the full circle, it dropped them off and now we got to put them back on again. I didn't want to say it the wrong way.
No, you're, you're good. And then we will, I believe there's provision that we can adjust for asking for the reimbursement from the state to get those credit monies back so that we're not losing those dollars out of our coming budget.
So we have six total. Do you want to make a motion to approve them as a group? Lance?
Yes.
Okay. I'll just go ahead and read the parcel numbers off eight-six-two-zero-zero-five-four-zero-zero-zero-two. That's a family farm tax credit for Paul and Andrea Brown. Eight-nine-one-nine-oh-two-four-five-seven-zero-zero-one. This is a business property tax credit for Todd Sitzman. Eight-six-two-zero-zero-four-three-zero-zero-zero-zero-one, Paul and Andrea Brown, family farm tax credit. Marilyn Bieber. It was a local home was put on its own parcel and the value wasn't taken out of the original parcel. The next one, eight-nine-two-one-one-four-four-two-seven-zero-one-five. It's Matthew Repair. This is a business property tax credit. Eight-nine-two-one-one-three-four-three-two-zero-one-six, Steve and Rhonda Deemer. It's a business property tax credit.
Or make a motion to approve it as stated.
I'll say.
I have a motion and second any discussion. Hearing none on paper say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Let's get away with the game.
Yep. Next item is appoint the consideration of reappointing Steve Rucker to the VA Commission.
I'll make a motion to appoint Steve to the VA Commission.
I will say it.
I have a motion and second any discussion. Hearing none on paper say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item I have is I'm going to hold off Julie and go to, I've got a couple changes in status for the sheriff's office. The first is the hiring of Jamie Anderson as a permanent part-time correctional officer at a rate of twenty thirty-five an hour effective September first.
I make a motion to agree.
I have a motion and second any discussion. Hearing none on paper say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is a hiring of a permanent part-time correctional officer at a rate of twenty thirty-five an hour, Dale Johnson. Effective September sixth, sorry, Renee.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion and second any discussion. Hearing none on paper say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, Julie. You bet. Julie is a representative of Cigna and she was invited in to talk about their ancillary benefits.
I've worked with in the supplemental business and insurance business for twenty-five years. And about three years ago, I've come upon Cigna, which is an amazing product. And so what it does, it's a little bit different than other cancer policies that have been in the county before with their treatment-based programs where you have to turn in your eye cast scans, those kind of things. As you go, you get payment. And the reason we carry supplemental benefits is because the expense when you get cancer, heart, next stroke is extremely high. Call payments, you debt both time off, both spouse time off, work mileage, everything that goes with it, loss of wages, both parents, if a child has it, both partners, et cetera. So what Cigna did is they came up to program that's very amazing. What it does, it gives you a lump sum. So you don't have to pay for it. They, you're going to follow your report. They do all the work from there. And so you get lump sum payment upfront upon diagnosis. So you have your cash immediately. You don't have to struggle with bills, call payments and death wells and cash comes to you, you do what you want. With a lot of programs out there, you have to have treatment to get paid. So people get diagnosed a stage four cancer, they decide not to get treatments, their other policy is pay maybe two thousand dollars upfront and then they're done getting paid. But Cigna, they don't care if you get any treatment at all. You get the, the payment you signed up for. You pick between five and seventy-five thousand dollars. When you get that diagnosis, that check comes to you upfront. You can add on chemo and radiation at the rate of fourteen hundred a week for radiation, several weeks for chemo. There's other models, but that's the top level. That's huge. I just had a forty-year-old get diagnosed with cancer. Her check was fifty-seven thousand dollars. We paid her. She got fifty thousand upfront and then she got seven thousand for radiation. She just has told everybody what a difference it's made in her life. There's other lump sum products out there. What they do is say you bought fifty thousand of your spouse twenty-five and the child, it means twenty-five or twelve thousand five hundred, which has never made sense to me because why is one person less than the other? They're, they're not going to have any bus bills on the other person. So Cigna, everybody gets the same amount all the way across. Yeah, and you can pick and choose what cancer, you want cancer and heart attack and stroke, et cetera. So there's, you can combine or, or the single. And if you go to another Cigna agent, you're not going to get this rate outside of the group. I have a special deal bonus Cigna where I can make anybody up to age ninety-nine at their age, it's in forty-five years old. So very easy to have the cancer free five years. And after five years, then they can get this benefit. To add a recurrence onto the policy, which means if you get, say, a guy gets prostate cancer and he has surgery, this is deemed cancer-free. He gets cancer two years down the road, any kind of cancer, uh, signal giving the twenty-five percent of their base amount. They can also, they go five years, seventy-five percent. If they go ten years, you get a hundred percent of benefit again. So it just refills back into the program. Not unlike most people out there that have that product. So the product is very easy. Cigna does all the paperwork. Basically you follow the form, you follow your appointment, you're done. They do all the work for you. This girl that I just had the cancer claim with, she was just so amazed at how fast the checking. And she actually gave me a copy of it. And so she goes, show this to people. We took her name off, of course. You know, she's a, show this to people. This, you guys actually pay this, this step quickly, et cetera. So what we're asking, or I'm asking, is to be able to present this to the employees because so many people need this benefit out there. They don't know where to get it at a reasonable cost. And so it is very, very inexpensive. So what we do is I prefer, if we do it other people's checking accounts, because I can group rate around the checking account. That way they have to deal with payroll deduction. We don't have to deal with those kind of, when people get married, divorce, you know, going through your guys' office to make all these changes. I will do everything direct. I just want access to employees because I know how important cancer insurance is. Insurance has all the twenty-five years. And never once has it been come back and said, man, that didn't do what I needed. They're always, I think, thank you for sending this to me because I don't know how we made it through bankruptcy. Uh, main reason bankruptcy in the United States is cancer conditions because it just lingers and goes on and on. But unlike, I had one, one of my clients actually get diagnosed with cancer on Wednesday, it failed well, went to the hospital, ER and died on Thursday. Never even felt sick for days before then. So those, that's where Cigna comes in. So nice to get a payment without having to prove it. So. So any, I just kind of highlight, is there any questions or?
Becca, oh, go ahead, Lance.
So what, with this insurance, you wanted a payroll deduction. What happens if the employee retires, moves to somewhere else? Do they get to take this or does it fade away with the county?
If, if we do it through payroll deduction, they can take it with them. If we do it through their checking account at payroll rates, then it's already set up on their checking account. So, and I'm willing to do that as I do by other counties. We actually basically take it out of their checking account because it's one less payroll deduction you have to deal with. But it's given them a benefit because they actually have access to it.
Okay. And then the other one, you say you can bring anybody up to the age of ninety-nine and as long as they've been cancer-free for, you say, four or five years.
Five years.
Five years. At the age of forty-five, how fast does that build right back up after that?
Okay, the rate has never increased in the product. So once everybody's bought it, it freezes in, it can book, they're in, they're in the United States as Aflac or Quomel or any of the others can do the same thing.
So it doesn't, it doesn't raise with your age?
No.
Okay.
Now, if you're under forty-five, I believe you have a cheaper rate yet.
Renee?
No, he asked what I was going to ask.
Concerns or preferences and the potential for payroll deduction or how?
I spoke with her. I think it'd be smart to do it out of everybody's checking, have them set it up directly with her.
Okay.
Versus doing it.
So it wouldn't be pre-tax at that point though?
You could pre-tax a lump sum product in.
Oh, isn't it? Okay. Perfect.
So are they, you know, can you do annual payments or?
Yes. You can do annual, but Cigna actually prefers monthly for some reason.
What would an annual payment be?
It's for anybody over forty-five, it's twelve dollars every ten thousand. You can buy ten thousand dollars for twelve dollars. So fifty thousand, sixty dollars. Very expensive. And under that, like I said, it's way cheaper if you're under forty-five. And that goes by each bracket.
Is there also, let's say somebody's in it for twenty years and they've never claimed it? Would it work like a balance for them to pull it back out again or it's just money gone?
It's just money gone. And I just did a comparison for another group that had a money back five years ago. And it was very sad. After, there was a ten-year payback and that works in nationals twenty-year. If you go ten-year payback with this company did, what they paid in Cigna was less than half what they paid. You know, for the other, the ten-year payback. So what you're doing when you do a payback policy, you're paying extreme amount of price. Okay. Then we get that extreme cost, we could just, well, we put in that savings and you're going to be way money ahead. And then if you have a claim, you pay two, three, four times as much for that product as you should have. And now you're not getting, getting money back because they take your claims off. So it's a really waste. I, my opinion is a really waste of money. When I did this spreadsheet, I wish I would have it with me. I did all the age brackets and they were paying like two hundred and forty-five dollars a month where Cigna was like sixty. Where you get your money back a ten-year, where you spent way more, you had invested that different way. Where you get your money back ten years, where you spent way more, you'd invested that different way ahead. Cancer insurance is not investment. I mean, it's there for cancer. You know, that's my opinion. You know, it's just, I've seen, I've been in insurance for this forty-five years.
So, you're saying an annuity or something else would be a better investment?
Way better investment, yeah.
Okay.
Even a savings account at the bank, no interest would be better.
And Becca, did you explain that if we decide to allow her to solicit this to employees that we have overnight people that we have to?
Yep, we talked about meetings and working out with the sheriff's department and then also with engineers.
Okay. Lance, any other concerns or emotion?
I would like to bring it back to next week's, you know, the before an action statement.
Okay.
Okay, would you guys like?
Absolutely. And could you just leave a bunch and we can get them out to the department heads? At least we can get them in the loop and get their input.
And then people can ask, inquire and and it back to us.
Yep.
Right next week.
The big thing that I find in the business that doing it so long is, I know you say to other people, hey, are interested in this? If you have any interest in this, I don't know, no. It's not until they actually hear it and we talk through it with them that they actually, because they never take time. Right, I can give a presentation on Monday and if I say, I'll talk to you two weeks from now, it's gone. I mean, they're in the backseat, they're on the counter at home and in its history. If you say, okay, guys, I'm gonna present today, I'm gonna get back to you in two days, you get back to me in two days, interest is way higher. Okay, now, I'll give you example, I did three hundred people. They wanted to do it kinda like that, pass it out, whatever. Then he put on a survey sheet, three people came back, they were interested. I said, now, can I do it my way? And they said, sure. We had seventy percent sent us. So, big difference, pass now, doesn't work. Just saying, hey, you guys, interested in this, doesn't work because they're not interested until they understand the value of why we sell this medical. Not to be rude or anything.
Right. I don't know if the language and the agenda actually allows us to make a decision on it today. That would.
No, this is, you're just presenting.
So?
Right.
Yep.
Besides, I wonder though.
Offering.
I wonder though if we should set up, I mean.
We have a department meeting next Wednesday.
Okay.
After, but it's after that, so we're gonna be on there to come back in two weeks.
Well, or.
I think there's going to be significant interest.
Yeah, set up meetings with.
The quality of the product is what has not, has not sold so well in the past, right, Becca?
Yeah.
So. Yeah, if, Jolene, if you wanna, so do you want it on next week's agenda or?
You want her to present at the department head meeting?
We have almost all the department heads here.
I'm, I'm okay with it being on next week's.
Next, yeah. So, next week, consideration of engaging with Cigna.
And the policy does have options. You can add on each person, they can add on intensive care, they can add on hospital indemnity, et cetera.
Okay.
Those are all, and every designs and programs themselves, which is really nice. One thing about when you go to buy from another company, State Fonia or whatever it is, you have specific pricing and a temperature. Okay, with this, so make them buy a ten thousand dollar policy for twelve bucks. And they can have some protection, we just can cover the full payment deductible, et cetera. People usually go over that, but I do sell some ten thousand dollars. People like, you know what, twelve bucks can fit in my budget, I'll cover that full payment, the death balls. You know, and get me started on the right foot. So, it's kinda nice to be able to have that and seeing that the hospital indemnity, they can mount kinds of different levels. It just depends where they wanna be at.
And they can switch their benefit annually then during enrollment?
And they can do it in time because it's not pre-tax.
Okay.
So, they can't, we can't increase the policy or whatever. We can cancel it, we can buy a new one. For the case may be, that is, but when you buy it, it's stuck, that policy stuck where it's at.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Stop it, but if you.
And it covers all dependents under the age of?
Twenty-six unless you're married.
Unless you're married.
Yeah.
Can you stick around till after the meeting? So, I, I've got a couple of questions and I'm sure there are some of our other department heads may as well. Alright, thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. You're welcome.
Alright, attorney lawyer. Let's knock this auction out.
Alright, before the break, we were at twenty-one hundred. So. Twenty-two. All right. Let's go to twenty-three. Twenty-three. Twenty-four. Twenty-five. Three thousand. Three thousand, Mr. Albright?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one, Mr. Singer. Thirty-two. Thirty-three, all right. Thirty-five. Thirty-five, Mr. Singer. Can I just ask what the plan is for the, you know?
I do, but I can't say. I mean, it's nothing terrible, obviously, but. We won't be butting a hog in the back of the.
So, we are, sorry, we are at thirty-five. Thirty-six? Okay, thirty-six, Mr. Albright.
Four thousand.
A four thousand, Mr. Singer.
Mr. White called the bid.
Okay, so we have four thousand, Mr. Singer. Twenty-one's.
There were no other bids online. Probably check one more time.
Alright. Anybody online, the high bid is four thousand? We'll see anything. So, four thousand going once, Joe, twice, now I'll go to the board and is that, you have any objection to the sale?
I don't.
Nope. Seal bid would've been a better deal.
Can I just have a motion to approve that or I'll, I'll go ahead and, I mean, if I'm not hearing any, I'm still gonna need your blessing at the end. So, I'll go ahead and say sold for four thousand, Mr. Singer. And then, it could be a motion that, that.
I'll make a motion to approve the sale of the round barn for four thousand dollars to Adam Singer.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion, second, any discussion?
Yes, is the name, is it going in your name?
Probably business name. I'll provide all the information later, tomorrow morning.
I just, I didn't know if the motion had to be in the business name or not.
No, I just, I just, I think it's consummating the sale, whether he puts it in his own name or if something doesn't really make any difference, I don't think.
Okay, I just wanna clarify.
Sure. So, you voted on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Congratulations on the second auction.
Give you my commission.
Other business, Sheriff Daniel.
Nothing.
Michael. Michelle, property tax statements are out. And Maria.
Yep.
Lori?
Nothing.
Hey, Thomas? Jolene?
We have two specials coming up again on September thirteenth. They're for two different school districts. UCLUW and Eldorado Providence School. That's not South Park, it's Eldorado Providence School. Satellite for Eldorado Providence is going to be the sixth at the volleyball game from three thirty to nine thirty. It's kind of, kinda, a layman's term is kind of a mobile absentee ballot. They're, oh, yeah. There's no machines, you know, so.
It's just fully not a ballot, putting it in the collection, the lock collection box, correct?
Right.
And then they'll be brought back here, put in the vault and counted on election night after the poll is closed.
Correct, by our absentee board.
Okay.
So, the school can hold the election just in the Eldorado, Eldorado School District and not including Providence?
Well. Exortion of South Park.
Yeah.
Not covered, right?
Right, oh, alright.
There you have it louder. We already have our own bond that we're paid for, so, yeah.
Okay.
They're trying to be welcome to the club, yep.
Okay.
And then, of course, the generals, general in November. And absentee voting to request an absentee ballot is now open for the general. But mailing will not, of the absentee ballots will not be until twenty days before the election. If they can start requesting them now, obviously.
Alright. And poll workers still available. You take some and training would probably be in the next few weeks to, not probably too late to help with the specials.
No, actually, if, if we have somebody that contacts us, we're gonna have some training tomorrow afternoon. So, if you have someone that is kinda sitting on the fence, definitely contact us. You can train, because it's a little bit different training.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, Taylor?
Nothing good, so. Like I said.
So, just equipment.
Yes, they have good equipment breakdown, so yes. Right, it stands still, moment on our big steps. Yep.
Alright. Lance, anything else?
Nope.
Renee?
Nothing.
Okay, I have nothing. I can ask for a adjournment or recess.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
The one, the equipment we're using.